Call the meeting to order. Roll call of Aldermen.
Alderman Heisler.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Meyer.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Rudjowitz.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Davidson.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Hayden.
Here.
Alderman Seibert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Orlett.
Here.
Alderman Schneider.
Here.
All the Aldermen are present. Roll call of department heads.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief, Poor. City Attorney, Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Matrit. Tim Gregawitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belleville. City Treasurer, Hart.
Here.
Ken Vaughn's excused. Chief Clay's excused. Assistant Chief Spargner's here for him. And Chuck Schaefer's excused. Assistant Director of Streets, Mike Parks is here. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would ask that you would stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I open public participation, I just want to say that when I do raise your hand, I will call on you one at a time. You come to the center microphone, please give your name. And keep your comments to two to three minutes. And try to keep it, if at all possible, on to topics of the agenda. So at this time, I will open public participation. I'm sorry. Mr. Hagberg, you can go first.
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. I want to talk tonight about the agenda items that were to increase the fees for the liquor and gaming machines. The public is, you know, the website's much better than it used to be. But the public is still fighting to be able to find the information. And even if you know that the packet, the public packet is posted on the clerk's page, and you go to that to find it, in tonight's packet, there was no detail about what the fees were going to be that were going to be increased. And all you have is an agenda item that says, "Consideration to increase the fees." I think that more consideration has to be put to allow the public to know what's coming up on the agendas, and more detail, so that, you know, if it does affect them, they have the time to research it, and not just rush things through without, you know, proper public notification. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rick Brown, 125 Lucilla Lane Shiloh. I want to state right from the beginning, this is not to disparage Mary McQ. Everybody in this room loved her, as did I. I have serious concerns about the residency of Alex McQ for Alderman. Right now, there's a...
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
You know, Mr. Brown, I have your opinion here. And I'm not against you doing the research, or your having your opinion. And perhaps voicing it in a different venue, but here is not the place. You're talking politics. And this man is running for an election. And you are coming up here and criticizing or critiquing, you know, and that's not the way to do it. Public election is, let the best man win. If we give you the venue to come up here, wouldn't we give him the venue?
This whole venue's about politics.
I object to this man talking negatively about somebody running for office.
Well, especially you've talked about the last meeting.
I didn't have the documents that I've got now. And I have serious problems with the ballot being printed with somebody's name on it that might not be eligible.
Okay. Mr. Brown, first of all, I ask that we try to stay to the agenda, which we all agreed when we had our Parliament Procedure Meeting. And that was supposed to be, according to all the training, that we would stick to the agenda. And this has been discussed. You could've came to the public hearing the day they had the public hearing on the election matter. You didn't come that day.
No, I wasn't here.
Well, okay.
I had serious concerns about his eligibility.
Your concerns are noted, and I think this topic tonight...
There are documents that were filed with the court in St. Clair County where he stated he didn't come here until, to help with his mother's estate. And that set the date in July.
Okay, Mr. Brown, I'm going to stop this tonight. You've given everybody information. I think we're not staying on topic. And you're here to, your comments have been very, you know, very severe against one person. And the public participation is not here to chastise or to go after someone.
No, it's against you too, because you were the judge on an election hearing.
Well, so was Dallas Cook, and so was Paul Seibert.
You were helping Mr. McQ and his attorney, and the phone calls, the 38...
Mr. Brown, I'm going to ask that you sit down.
I'd like to put this into the record and give it to Dallas Cook.
Anyone else like to speak this evening? Hold it. This gentleman here first.
You know, I don't know if I can follow that.
Could you give, could you give your name, please?
Robert Romannic, Mayor, you know who I am.
No, but the public might not.
Address?
Belleville, Illinois. I don't know if I can follow this, gentlemen. This may not be on the agenda. But I swear, I thought I was coming to Belleville. This is more like Moscow, when a gentleman can't stand up and talk for his rights. Having said that, last week, I beat your friend, Mark Kern, in court after three and a half years. His wife swore under oath that their daughter lived in the first ground apartment at that medical clinic. And there's a lot of firemen here. And I've been trying to get an answer for three and a half years. I've been through hell. I expect to put everybody else through hell if I'm right. How can, and I'll ask a fireman, how can anybody live in a house where there's a bedroom where there's no egress or ingress? Somebody said it's been going on, I don't care how long it's been going on. Mayor, it's illegal. You know it's illegal. And you guys are going to do nothing but cover his butt. Can I get an answer about how he can live in that tomb?
This is your comment, Mr. Romannic. It's not question and answer. This isn't Quiz de Maire. This isn't Quiz Department.
Okay, Mayor, you know, listen, I'm an American. I have to sit there and be chastised by you? You understand me? I just want to know, how can he live there? Put me out of order.
You put yourself. You're done.
Was that a threat, Mayor? You threatened me once. What do you mean, I'm done?
I said...
You said I was done. What does that mean, Mayor? You said, "I was done"? What does that mean? You threatened me one time, and they let you go and arrested me. What does that mean, Mayor? I'm done? No.
Gentlemen?
Yeah.
Ask him to please leave. No, you've had a spit. You've had your stretch. Would you sit down? Yes, in the back of the room.
Stewart Lanard, 318 South 29th Street.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Start over, please.
Stewart Lanard, 318 South 29th Street, Belleville, Illinois. I think that bald headed gentleman is out of line. This should be a free discussion. You should get two or three minutes without some butthole telling you what you can or cannot say.
Stewart, Stewart, Stewart. How many times have you and I talked about being aggressively putting people down and calling names here? Now, we have young people in this. We've gone over the character traits. We've gone over public participation. And you tend to forget quickly. Now, go ahead and proceed with your comments unless they get derogatory, and you're going to get sit down.
I think Cass Kaski Engineering is guilty of conflict of interest on their contracts. They're too close to the Belleville administration. And this, I should have wrote it down. Oh, the nitpicking about Seibert's, I think Mr. Seibert's didn't have his thing filled out properly. Now, that was overlooked. But the Supreme Court of Illinois threw out Mayor Parks's bid for Mayor of East St. Louis, because he didn't have his filled out properly. Is, I don't know the term, but, so you gotta, if it's an opposition party, they gotta have the Ts and dots all dotted and eyed, and the proper signatures, and all this and that. But if it's one of the end parties...
Party of order.
Oh, we cut you some slack, you know?
Okay. Stewart, is that it?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Patty Gregory for Rain Tree Woods, Belleville, Illinois. What I would like to talk about tonight is, I know you will be voting on the new economic developer. And I just want to express my opinion that we are at a crossroads here in our community. We, you know, we have the possibility of a hospital moving away. We also have new development coming in, which is great. But we need to continue to bring in new development. And I just want to say, I think we need an economic plant developer, not a city planner. Because the city planner is there for land use. And the economic developer is there to bring in economic activity into the city. And I think there is a reason for them to work together. And I'd love to see a city planning and an economic development department. But I understand that financially, that may not be feasible. So I just hope that everybody considers everything about what the future of Belleville is with this, our new economic person coming in. I think it's one of the most important votes that this city council can make for the future of Belleville. Thanks.
Anyone else? I'm going to close public participation. This time, I'm going to move on to, we have some special recognitions. Chief Tom Poor, will you come to the microphone? As you all know, we recently experienced a tragic house fire. And we're very fortunate, we don't have calls of this severity on a daily basis. And it doesn't surprise me how well our fire department responded, and how well they acted, because they're well-trained, and they're very dedicated. But when we have a situation of this magnitude, I agree with Chief Poor and Deputy Chief, that we should recognize these individuals and take a moment and pause. So Tom, I turn the microphone over to you.
I'm probably going to bounce around here a little bit. Go over, I'd like to make sure that I can see everybody when I'm talking. But what I want to do first is give everybody kind of an overview of our fire department, who's in where. Belleville has a full-time career fire department with 63 firefighters. We have four stations that are spread throughout the city, which makes it difficult. We have a lot of geography to cover. We have a minimum of three people that are on duty in each station every day. And when there's a fire burning in someone's house, every minute, I mean, you just can't, you can't put a number on how big the fire can grow each minute. So getting the units on scene right away is of the utmost importance. So what I'm going to do today is, I'm going to kind of talk you through what happened at the fire, along with my crews. But what I don't want to do is take this group and then make them a bunch of superheroes, because they did their job. They did an awesome job. And they can be called heroes. But my other firefighters, on a yearly basis, were called for assisting the ambulances with cardiac arrest. We had one last fall where we did CPR for 30 minutes on an individual at a nursing home. And that patient survived. We cut people from cars monthly. We do all kinds, anytime the fire department, anytime a citizen needs something, and they're not sure who to call, we usually end up getting the call. Whether it's, we took a cat from behind a dishwasher the other day. We get cats out of trees. We had a couple guys swim out through icy water to the point of exertion, kind of like these guys were the other day at the fire. I mean, taking themselves to the limits to save somebody's dog. So whether it's these guys, or the rest of my firefighters, why don't everybody stand up for my firefighters? Because I know every one of them in the same spot as these gentlemen would have done the exact same thing. So kind of what I'm going to do is make my way over here. I'm going to steal your microphone here a second. For those of you who aren't familiar with this fire, March 4th at 11:34 in the morning, a gentleman from residents of 2620 Oaksville Road made a 911 call. Said his garage was on fire. Garage fire, not a big deal usually. For the most part, our biggest concern with the garage fire is exposures. What might be next to the garage? That call went to Swansea first, because it was a borderline call. Their dispatchers, our dispatchers did an awesome job. Within two minutes of the call going to the wrong place, our towings were set out for that garage fire. At 11:36, Lanard 29, which is Captain Ariza, firefighter Tyler Whitney, firefighter Brian Rika, they were responding from Station 2. It's 11:36, and their towings went out. They got on the road right away. And this is what I'm saying is key about having firefighters in the stations ready to go. Because three minutes later, they were on scene. Our average response to house fires last year was two minutes. But we turned, in this particular event, as soon as they got in the house, we got additional information that said that the garage was attached to the house. So that makes us think a whole different story. What made this different, you know, for the most part, we thought, okay, well, we're talking to a caller. The garage is attached to the house, but it's the middle of the daytime. The dispatcher told them to get everybody out of the house. He said he'd get everybody out of the house. And we totally were working on that. So we're assuming that everybody's out of the house. When they arrived on scene, like I said, three minutes after they were dispatched, they had heavy fire showing in a garage. But the twist to it was the garage was underneath the house. It was a drive-under garage. So we had a fully involved car. The stairway was open, leading straight to the upstairs. A room downstairs burning. So right away, there's 1200 to 1400 degrees superheated gases, smoke and fire going upstairs. That's challenging in itself, for the three people pulling out by themselves. As soon as they got off the truck, and I was there a couple minutes later, so I'm going by what they told me, but as soon as they got off the truck, they were met with, was it the resident? Said there were two people trapped. Totally different spin on things, because those three are the only three I'm seeing. That was 11:39. And 11:40, the next three gentlemen pulled up. Captain Longland, Engineer Bauer, and firefighter Orchard. Three more. But the problem is, the first trucks, the ladder trucks, got 500 gallons of water. That's going to get us three minutes. So that second truck needed to get a supply line. They needed water. So Captain Longland got off, and these guys were pulling the line from their truck. They had their airbags on when they got off the truck. The resident had already tried to get into the house. And he couldn't make it, even reached his hand in his hat. He couldn't even go any farther. Our guys tried before the hand line was even ready, and it was just, the heat was too intense. They couldn't make it anywhere inside the building. Firefighter Longland pulled the hose line and started putting it on the car and the garage below. Normally, a fire like that, if we pulled up on a house fire and a garage is on fire, we would never put guys over the top of it. Because when we train the guys, we tell them that we risk nothing to save nothing. So a house that's already lost, which a house in the basement fire is nothing to save. Everything above it is going to be trash. So in a normal incident, I wouldn't even let them go up there. I'd let them, tell them to put the fire out from the outside until we can make sure it's safe to go in. Totally different scenario when there's people trapped. We'll risk a little bit to save a little bit, and we'll risk a lot to save a lot. And that's happened that day. So like I said, we're still two minutes into this. We got two trucks on scene, but only four guys are actually at the house. And actually, firefighter Rika is pumping the truck, so we still only have three guys that are at the house. But still very fast after the call, because that initial call came out to us at 11:36. So we're four minutes into it, got two trucks on scene. Now I'm going to jump, so I don't miss a quote here. My third truck out there at 11:43. That is moving down the line with next white chair, Captain Nelson, Engineer Kimball, our rookie firefighter Preston. I say rookie because he hasn't, had he been, he started with us in December, January? I think it was January. We sold him from the Alton Fire Department, which is fortunate, because he already had the fire academy. Had he been with us as a green rookie, he wouldn't even go into the academy until this month. So he was on the next truck again, as was firefighter Starwell. So as they get there, like I said, this is all happening within a few minutes' time. Captain Ariza, firefighter Whitney, they go in and try to make an attack, I mean, try to go in to make a rescue. Captain Longland is down below spraying water. And they go in, they're searching, trying to find, incredibly hot. I mean, I can't even say how hot it was. I know one time Captain Ariza told me, when they were on the other side of the house, guys were spraying water above their head, and it was all turning to sea, and none of it was hitting down to them. The only reason he knew they were spraying water is because everyone saw they'd hit him with the water. So we're talking about extreme temperatures. And Captain Ariza, firefighter Whitney, they found the woman in the middle of the house. And then firefighter Starwell assisted them in pulling her out. Then, once they got out of the house, Deputy Chief Dakers, Tyger Shield, and firefighter Kimball carried her down to the, down to the ambulance where they did CPR, and are trying to, you know, help get her into the ambulance, get her on the road. So that's the first patient. Still another patient inside. And you see, there's lots of things going on as these other trucks are arriving. And I don't want to not mention anybody, but everybody played a crucial role. Because had it not been for some of the guys ventilating, guys spraying, you know, trying to knock the fire down, it would have been possible for those careers to survive inside the building. Let's see. Station 1 was the next truck, Captain Bradley, Engineer Kringel, firefighter Minor. They were the next ones on scene. The second victim. Captain Ariza went back in again. And he was with firefighter Preston, our rookie. And they searched several rooms of the house, having trouble finding the victim. Intense heat fire. I said there's fire coming straight up the stairwell. They knocked the fire down, closed the door. But it's still just unbearable heat. We had the occupant of the house obviously distraught. Captain Bradley had to basically subdue him, just because we didn't, we couldn't afford to have another victim. And they got in and found the second patient in a back bedroom. And it was Captain Ariza, firefighter Ariza. And then Engineer Kringel also assisted in getting that patient outside and down to the ambulance. At that point, we pulled everybody out. Because the house, the house was totally lost when we got there. The fact that these gentlemen went above and beyond to make sure they made this rescue. The word of the month, perseverance. What can I say? So what we want to do is, we have two certificates made here. One is for the actual rescue. And we also ordered some metal alloys for those individuals, which we had ordered, so they won't be in for a few weeks. And then the other certificate is in the assisting of the rescue. Because if not everybody's up there, it couldn't happen. So you want to go ahead and, Captain Ariza?
Can we hold the clap so we can hear the names, please?
Captain Rick Longland. Engineer James Bauer. Firefighter Richard Orchard. Captain Joe Ellison. Engineer Dan Kimball. Probationary firefighter, Matt Preston.
We never let them forget their rookie, even though they...
Firefighter Paul Starwell. Captain Mike Bradley. Engineer Tom Kringel. Firefighter Mike Bradley. Oh, excuse me.
Firefighter, he's not mentioned yet, Captain Randy Shield.
Tyger Chief Randy Shield.
He was my first assistant commander of the team. He was the one that ran operations at the fire. He was the one that was making sure that everybody was together, doing what they needed to be doing safely.
Thank you, gentlemen. Great job. Tom, thank you. We move on to appointments. At this time, I'm recommending or asking for a motion to appoint Anessa G. McCaskill as Director of Economic Development Planning and Zoning, effective April 6, 2015. So I'll move. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt. Discussion. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye. Can I ask if she's here to stand to be...
Would you give me a second? First of all, the motion passed. Anessa, would you please stand, so we can recognize you? As we stated in here, Anessa will start on April 6. This process has been going on for some time. I will tell you that I am very pleased with her accepting this position. And I believe she brings an awful lot to the table. That is going to be very beneficial to the city and the staff as we grow our city. So, Anessa, thank you for being here. And your son, Micah, is here tonight. Micah, we're glad to, I was glad to meet you. And we look forward to having you give your leadership here with the city in days ahead. So thank you very much. Okay. We move on to the regular council minutes of the meeting for March 2. What's your pleasure?
I move we accept and file the minutes.
Move to receive and file. Do I hear a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Second by Alderman Anthony. The motion was by Alderman Schmidt. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of receiving and filing the minutes from March 2 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go on to claims, payroll, and disbursements. What's your pleasure?
Yes, Your Honor, I'll make a motion to pay the claims, payrolls, and disbursements. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Schmidt. Do I hear discussions about this item? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Housing Report of Cash Receipts, fiscal year 2014 to '15 through February 2015. What's your pleasure? Motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella. Any questions? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ask for a same-like motion for the Treasurer's report 2015. Motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Anthony. Any discussion on that? Motion to receive and file. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We go to oral reports, and I go to Alderman Sillsby from Finance.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid of $31,006.40 from Vermeer Midwest for a brush chipper to be paid over $5 equal lease to own installments of $7,029.19.
We go to oral reports and I go to Alderman Sillsby from Finance.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid of thirty-one thousand six forty from Vermeer Midwest for a brush chipper to be paid over five equal lease to own installments of seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Housing report of cash receipts fiscal year 2014 to 15 through February 2015. What's your pleasure? Motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cincella. Any questions? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry and ask for a same like motion for the Treasury's report 2015. Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Anthony, any discussion on that? Motion to receive and file? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to oral reports and I go to Alderman Sillsby from Finance.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid of thirty-one thousand six forty from Vermeer Midwest for a brush chipper to be paid over five equal lease to own installments of seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Housing report of cash receipts fiscal year 2014 to 15 through February 2015. What's your pleasure? Motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cincella. Any questions? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry and ask for a same like motion for the Treasury's report 2015. Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Anthony, any discussion on that? Motion to receive and file? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to oral reports and I go to Alderman Sillsby from Finance.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid of thirty-one thousand six forty from Vermeer Midwest for a brush chipper to be paid over five equal lease to own installments of seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Housing report of cash receipts fiscal year 2014 to 15 through February 2015. What's your pleasure? Motion to receive and file?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second by Alderman Cincella. Any questions? All in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry and ask for a same like motion for the Treasury's report 2015. Motion by Alderman Cincella, second by Alderman Anthony, any discussion on that? Motion to receive and file? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to oral reports and I go to Alderman Sillsby from Finance.
Your Honor, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid of thirty-one thousand six forty from Vermeer Midwest for a brush chipper to be paid over five equal lease to own installments of seven thousand twenty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Cincella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlick. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second motion is to approve purchase of iPads for elected officials. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have discussion? Alderman Cybert.
Your Honor, we all have computers, I don't know what we need iPads for. Put that money in the police department.
Could I, could I have a second to give a few details?
Yes.
Well, the first thing I want to tell you is I, I hope that you had an opportunity to open up the packet that we sent you this time. And you'll notice that it's bookmarked. And when I say bookmarked, what I mean is, you know, now if you go online, you have to scroll all the way down and then try to find what you're looking for. Well, what we've done now is we've used Adobe X Pro, which we're using a trial version, we have not purchased yet. Um, and it allows us to do that bookmarking. So you, you can simply click on it and find anything you want and you'd be able to do the same thing during the meeting. You'd also be able to go back years past and say something happened three years ago and you just can't quite remember. All you'd have to do is on your iPad, search, type in the one word and it'll come up with everything with that word and it'll all be at your fingertips. The other thing I want to do to address Alderman Cybert's concern is that it costs approximately ten thousand dollars per year to make and deliver packets, paper packets to you, which obviously hurts the environment and it's costing us money. So this proposal here to purchase these iPads will actually over the next ten years save us one hundred thousand dollars. So it's a cost savings measure. Um, and that cost does not include the labor in making the packets as well and the lack of efficiency in our office. The other thing we would need to make this happen, we would need Adobe X Pro, which is nineteen dollars and ninety-nine cents per user. Um, we think we would need seven users, so that would be a hundred and forty dollars per month. So we're looking at about sixteen, sixteen hundred dollars a year would be a regular cost. Now, I will tell you, um, all of the clerks or secretaries, as you'd like to say, um, need this anyway. This is something they've been doing without for far too long. And even my assistant jokingly told me Dallas, if they, we can't approve this, I'll, I'll pay for it myself. And of course, we'd never let her do that, but that's how important this is and how much we can take advantage of this. The other thing I, I wanted to tell you real quick was a couple other features. One, obviously, you may have wireless internet at your home, which would be great, but if you don't, there are other places like here at City Hall, we have free wireless to, to you all that we can share the password with. Also McDonald's or Bread Company is easy to go and download and then have that packet. When you set up, maybe on the weekend you want to have coffee and go over to city business and spend a lot of time. Or you want to take, take that iPad out to a work site and you want to have all that information with you. Um, this is something to keep us up with the times, to save money and, uh, and eventually it's going to allow me to help make the city very transparent, something that I did, um, run on. And, um, that's why we're researching other software companies right now. And we are, um, doing everything we can to get every single document in the city scanned and available to the public and it'll also be available to you. So this is a win-win, we're going to save money and we're going to, we're going to move forward with technology, so I'm hoping you'll consider it.
Alderman Schneider.
Um, I'm not saying yes or no, I just have a couple of questions. So if we have the wireless internet in our home, we don't have to have anything extra installed, right?
No.
Now, if we have a wireless printer, how, is it easy to hook up to our printer?
Absolutely.
So this part of our agendas are the packets I would like paper type, but I would print it out myself as long as.
Right.
All I do is hook it up, is it hard to do of hooking up?
I, I could come over to your house and set up your printer on your iPad.
Because right now my computer is hooked to my printer, but I believe I have a wireless printer because I just bought a new one.
Sure.
So every.
It's just going to be your paper and your ink now, if you want a paper copy.
And our TVs aren't going to have to go up on our internet if we already have printers, right?
No. No.
Alderman Meyer.
I'm just, um, point of, uh, security features, uh, what are we doing with this IT, putting spam control and all that?
Right, and that's why we were actually recommended to go instead of Samsung, to go with, um, Apple, because they're virtually virus-free. And IT would obviously be working in this process and I've spent some time with Rich talking about it. Yeah.
Alderman Schmidt.
And, um, I'm sorry, do you have the total cost, again, of what the iPods would cost? Or the whole package?
Uh, yes. As, um, Jamie had asked at Finance to go ahead and get another estimate. And in the estimate, I did include, um, since Alderman Meyer had said, well, what if somebody drops it? We did include otter boxes so that you could throw it across the room and it won't have a problem. It also comes with a two-year warranty.
Okay.
Um, but yes, I do have a new price listing, um, for a total for, for everything. And this includes other features like a keypad, the protection, the warranty.
And this includes the Adobe, including the.
Not Adobe X Pro.
Okay.
But that's nineteen ninety-nine a month and that's just for the girls in the office to have.
So what's the total then?
The total's going to be fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents.
Okay, and I, I agree, I would like to hire more cops too, but at the same time, if we have our own devices and we're using them on city business, I don't like, you know, this way city business can be on a city computer as opposed to being mixed in with your personal stuff. And that might not, that might be better for transparency also.
Right, and, and you got to remember, we might be spending fourteen thousand, but over the next ten years, we're going to save one hundred thousand.
And that's.
So that's, there's a police officer there, if that's what we're looking for.
That's at least a cop or two there, yeah.
Right.
Alderman Hayden.
Uh, could, could this motion, Your Honor, be amended that have that price in there now that we, uh, have a dollar up? And second, uh, I, I certainly share Alderman Cybert's concerns of, uh, I, I would like to put every dollar and cent and penny towards, uh, uh, more police to help our police officers that do an excellent job, uh, but we need more on the streets to help them. But if, I'm understanding City Clerk Cook's, uh, proposal that within two years, we're actually be saving money that, that we can put towards police or whatever that, that this council would decide.
Yes, sir.
So I, I think that's an excellent thing.
My recommendation, ladies and gentlemen, would be that, um, we would start this after May 1st, because we're going to, we're, number one, I don't even know how quick, I didn't even ask you how quick they could even deliver. But the other thing is I think before we dish them out or start the use of them, we need to have some policy put into effect. And I think I would ask the city attorney to sit down with staff and, and come up with a policy. Um, I think tonight if we pass this and give the dollar amount, then we have to amend the budget or Jamie has to work on the budget because this was not in our original budget proposal that you received. And then we would bring that back when we get the budget approved. And then after it's passed and they get them going, we'll have the policy in a matter of, I'd imagine, a week or so, we could have something together.
Add, besides policy, maybe, maybe a little bit of training too?
Well, I, I understand that, that's, that's, that's essential. But I would think that we'd want to, before we start handing these out, have a policy in place. And like I said, also, we have to get it into the budget. Uh, I'm not against it, but I think the policy and I think, uh, I think it would be, even if we could, as was talked about last meeting of Finance, we might be able to have them within a, you know, a couple of weeks. I, I think it'd be kind of, I would wait till May 1st to start at, at the earliest.
Agree.
I would also think we might put in the policy that everyone has to use this, I mean that people can't be calling the city and saying, print mine out for me. Or that there might be, you know, a surcharge for so much a copy because.
I, I think we have to.
And it's easy to hook one up. I hooked my mom's up the other day, I kind of waved the device to the printer, it hooked itself up, so it's pretty simple.
Well, we, that's what we got to have the policy for, yes.
Mr. Murphy, uh, do we have a policy for, uh, our phone use or anything like that? Others, other electronics?
We don't have that much that anybody takes right now, I mean.
Do we have policies for email use, computer use?
We have policies far as the computer that everybody, employees sign about, uh, we have everything from, I guess, uh.
Appropriate use.
Appropriate use and that type of things, but this would have to be incorporated. So we have some reviewing to do and it's going to take, you know, this is new. Like I said, I'm not against it, I think it's bringing us into the 21st century, but
Denial.
There was denial. We don't need an ardent drawn if it's denial. So our motion is to deny and comply with the zoning board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman White. Motion was by Alderman Seibert. Second was by Alderman White to agree with the zoning board and deny this request. Any discussion? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Who was the no, Alderman? Okay, Randall, note him. Motion does carry. That is denied. Uh, City of Belleville.
Eleven C three, case five, February fifteen. City of Belleville requesting use var- variance in order to utilize the property at seven-twenty West Main Street is the Belleville Police Headquarters located in a C-two heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of the zoning code sixty-six-six-fourty-nine, Ward five, ordinance number seventy-eight forty-seven.
Motion, okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve, uh, appropriate ardent drawn.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Sillsby for this first case of C-three here. Reference the City of Belleville and this, uh, site at seven-twenty West Main. Any discussion from anyone else? And that would be and to have the proper ardent drawn. All in favor of this motion to have the proper ardent drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, next.
Eleven C four, case six, uh, February fifteen. City of Belleville requesting a use permit in order to construct a private parking garage for the Belleville Police Department at one-oh-three South Seventh Street, located in a C-two heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code sixty-six-six-fourty-nine, Ward five, ordinance number seventy-eight forty-eight.
Uh, motion to approve and have the proper ardent drawn.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Hayden to approve this case and have the proper ardent drawn. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, my, my only concern here i- is looking at the, this, uh, uh, garage, uh, it, it just, for lack of terms, looks cheap.
Well, let's talk about the next step here, what we're proposing to do. We're gonna put a lot more brick on it, so hang on a second here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Now, explain. We have a motion, we have a second for this next, uh, for this next, uh, this next particular item, C-four. Any further discussion on that item? All in favor of this particular recommendation to have the proper ardent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven C five, case seven, February fifteen. City of Belleville requesting special use variance in order to use metal siding for the Belleville Police Department private parking garage at one-oh-three South Seventh Street located in a C-two heavy commercial zoning district. Applicable portion of zoning code sixty-six-six-fifty, Ward five, ordinance number seventy-eight forty-nine.
We heard the comments and we were well aware and we had our concerns, but we started out, uh, we're constantly looking at costs. Mike, uh, uh, Mike Crist is here from Impact Strategies. We talked about this, we listened to the concerns. So what we did was went back to the drawing board and, um, did the building on the two ends and on the east side, which is really gonna be the side most seen by the public. Now, this here, Mike, is this full, gonna be full brick or...
Uh, this shows brick to the top of the overhead doors, uh, on the front elevation as well as the side elevation, uh, and then it adds bricks on the rear elevation of the floor toward tall. There was also discussion about possibly taking the brick full height on the front elevation, um, this, this rendering only shows...
Right, so the, the, the option that was talked about having would be to brick the entire, uh, top two pieces and the middle piece all the way. And then have just the four foot on the back, uh, because that slope and everything, it's, uh, now, with that option, we're about sixty thousand dollar increase from what we originally proposed. If that's what this council would like to see, um, keep in mind, uh, as we are constantly looking at this project or these projects, there's three phases. Phase one is to, to remodel seven-twenty West Main. Phase two is to do considerable work here at City Hall to meet ADA improvements and remodeling of various parts of City Hall. And phase three is the garage. Um, we're not gonna deny to you that we're getting down to some very serious discussions about budget. So it could be before it's all over with, we gotta really rethink the garage right now anyway. We know, Jamie and I know, with what we have and what we can bond, we're at eighteen million and that's basically, we're, right now, we're, we're digging our heels in pretty much saying, these, this whole scope of work can't go over eighteen million is what we believe. Now, if it's eighteen and a couple nickels, that's one thing, but we're pretty much, the finance director and I are pretty much saying, we've gotta stick to the eighteen million. That's what we presented. Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item eleven C five, uh, the seven Feb- fifteen zoning board, uh, recommendation, have appropriate, uh, ordinance, which is seven eight-four-nine drawn up, which will include modifying this to add the, uh, brick as proposed, uh, because I think that it wa- it's a public building and, uh, it, it needs to fit into the, uh, existing building in, in the neighborhood appropriately.
I, I don't disagree. We, we presented initially trying to make an initial presentation based on trying to get this within budget. Um, but like I said, so what you're understanding is this building basically, three sides of it will be all brick with your motion and, and, or with the motion we're, we're see, asking for then. And the backside, which will face Eighth Street, face west, will be a modest four-foot elevation because it's kind of into the hillside. Alderman Meyer.
So at zoning, they said they approved using the metal siding.
It's still a metal building.
Okay.
Uh, it's still a metal, a bel- a metal building that, but we're gonna have, we're gonna brick...
The facade.
The facade.
I, I, I'm, well, my question is, we're changing what they, so is it a whole different matter?
It's the same, Mike.
Know what I mean? We're, we've quit, we're, we're saying they're, you're gonna do metal siding and then now we're...
There's still gonna be some metal, the roof.
So I guess I'm confused by, should it do...
The back's gonna have some metal on it?
We changed what zoning sent to us.
Well, zoning sent to us this request, but wanting, wanting more brick, right? We've exceeded what zoning actually wanted.
Right. Okay.
Okay?
We're saying we will agree that we wanna, we want more brick.
We're not disagreeing. It's just a matter of shaking out the dollars. We may be back at some point. We may have to slow the garage down. It's not impossible.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. To approve this case with the understanding that three sides are gonna be all brick and the backside will have four foot of brick coming up. And everybody understand, everybody agree with that? Mike here, follow and everything. So everybody understands that? Uh, so the motion is, uh, just as stated, and to have the proper ardent drawn with those changes.
Correct.
All in favor of that motion noting those changes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? No, no by Alderman Schneider.
I didn't know the last one, too. I don't know if you stick that one.
He'll duly note it. So we have a motion that carries. Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, okay, we go on to... Um, master sewer committee.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I'd like to preface this motion. Uh, this was on the agenda the second, uh, meeting, uh, the second city council meeting of February, and we approved, uh, a motion for a truck for forty-seven thousand, which was a two thousand fifteen with the specifications as required by the sewer department. Royce Carlisle came back to the March meeting and stated they do not lo- no longer make that, they'll have that model or that year, that, the only, the model that we needed would be, uh, two thousand sixteen. So the, uh, committee approved, uh, now I'm gonna make the motion. I just wanted to preface that.
Okay.
We had had that at the, approved it at the February meeting. So I'm gonna make a motion on behalf of the master sewer committee to approve the purchase of a new dump truck bid awarded to Dave Sinclair in the amount of fifty thousand two hundred thirteen dollars. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler.
Second.
Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Meyer. Do I hear discussion? Yes, sir.
Could I just get, I didn't really understand the explanation of what is coming back.
The two thousand fifteen, Trent, they, they, that, that was what we made the bid on. They do not make that model. Two, the, the certain specifications we needed.
The cutoff has passed. So we're into the sixteens and we're ready to start, have, start making them.
The certain specifications.
But didn't the person bidding on that know that? They're the car company, not us.
I can explain it. After you awarded it, we went to, uh, the, the, the low bid was, um, um, Merz and Milstein. And they told us they were not aware that Ford had stopped production on their two thousand fifteen, um, truck chassis. That they had two hundred and fifty orders through the United States and they only had made a hundred and fifteen or whatever that number was, but there wasn't a, a two thousand fifteen chassis they had in the United States, so, uh, in order to be fair, uh, we decided to bid it with a two thousand sixteen, rebid it with a two thousand sixteen chassis.
Okay. Everybody understand that explanation? So we have a motion and we have a second, right?
Yes.
You made the motion, correct?
Yes.
Second was?
Dorothy.
Alderman Meyer. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert. White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman Seibert.
Yes, Your Honor, I have, uh, four motions. I'd like to read them all. I have voted on one.
Any problem? Proceed.
Motion to approve Volker Inc. for real estate services for the Freeburg Avenue Roundabout Project. Motion to approve Kaskaski Engineering for various design services. Motion to approve Volker Inc. for various construction engineering. And a motion to approve Coolman Design Group for various surveying. So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Do I hear any discussion?
Is this a motion to, this is a, a motion to approve all four of these?
Yes.
But there's, are we gonna have it put into the motion that, um, eleven E one is at thirty thousand dollars and they're to come back to us if we both have to exceed that and the others, there is no dollar amount yet because they have not gone out for the...
Right.
Yet, we don't know the, but they will, it will be brought to Streets and Grades.
So there's a dollar amount on the first one, Tim?
Yes, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. You gentlemen with your motion agree with that?
And then the rest is, um, when they do the project for the services, they will come to Streets and Grades with the dollar amount because we don't have it yet.
Okay.
That should be put in.
Everybody understand that? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti. Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Uh, Alderman Sillsby.
Your Honor, on behalf of the library board, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number five from Sentry Service and Construction for the sprinkler sys- sprinkler system in the amount of a hundred and two thousand eight seventy-five fifty-five. So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kinsella. Do I hear discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Is that the change amount, the amount, what it was from or is that the total amount it's going to be? What is the amount it's being changed?
There was originally no sprinkler in the proj- project, right, Leander?
Yes, so originally there was no sprinkler system in the construction. Once construction began, the fire department came to us and said, "By code, we must install a sprinkler system in the basement." So we were doing the engineering for that. This is a dollar amount for the engineering and installation of that system.
Why wasn't it, um, in the plans or did you not know it needed to be in the plans?
We didn't know we needed it and the fire department didn't tell us till after we started.
The, the fire department didn't tell us initially that they wanted it in the basement and now it's, it, we understand, but it was not in the initial discussions. Plan review.
Shouldn't the people who drew up the plans know, know that?
It was a, we, be in an older building, there's some latitude, a different size of, and Tom can maybe explain.
Well, I can explain. We're only required to put the sprinkler in the basement, which is a nineteen-seventy-two edition, the original library, which is, uh, nineteen-oh-six construction. We're not required to sprinkle because of historic regulations. So it's only the seventy-two edition in the basement only.
But the question I think Alderman Galetti and I are asking, why wasn't this in the plans from the beginning? Didn't choose whoever did the work or that drew up the plans and that, did they not know what they were doing or...
No, they knew what they were doing. As I said, it was our understanding that because the building was historic, it was not required. That is true for the original building. That is not true for the basement, which is a seventy-two edition.
Is there any, is there any work being done in the basement, like any rehab work?
Yes, construction with the library is completely finished with the exception of the installation of the sprinkler system and the finished work in the basement, which we did not want to do until the sprinkler system was done. Everything else is one hundred percent complete.
We have a motion, we have a second for this change, Your Honor. Any further questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz. Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Communications.
Twelve A, the Orchard's Annual Easter Parade. A request from the Orchard's Social Committee asking to hold their annual Easter parade on Saturday, April fourth, two thousand fifteen, beginning at ten forty-five AM, and to close the parade route Second Fairway Court, south on Pro Tour Drive, turn right on Golf Course Drive, and then proceed to Pool and Clubhouse for forty-five minutes during the parade. As in the past, they are also requesting vehicular assistance from the Belleville Police and Fire Departments.
Move the requesting, granted.
Motion by Alderman, um, Seibert, second was Alderman Hayden. Discussion? All in favor approving this request signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Twelve B, Belleville Historical Society. The Belleville Historical Society is requesting activity for the event to be held at the Ebling Mauer House at eleven-oh-six West Main Street. The society is requesting permission to use the yard, Old West Belleville Public Square in front of our house for period demonstrations and oratories as a part of that event. It runs from ten until three. The theme will be Latin Farmer's Heritage Trail.
I'm moving to comply with their request.
Motion by Alderman Meyer, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion on this request? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Criticians, we have none. Resolutions? I'd ask for a motion to read by title only, resolution thirty-two twenty-three and thirty-two twenty-four. Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Any problem reading these together?
No.
All in favor of the motion, uh, read by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fourteen A, resolution number thirty-two twenty-three. A resolution of support for the City of Belleville program year two thousand fifteen, application for community development block grant funding. Fourteen B, resolution number thirty-two twenty-four. Resolution authorizing underground electric easement.
Motion to approve resolution thirty-two twenty-three and thirty-two twenty-four. So moved.
We have a motion, do we hear a second? Second by Alderman White. Discussion?
No, I had said second motion.
I'm sorry?
Nothing. I said I seconded the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Rudjowitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion's carry. Ardentices, I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ardent seventy-eight forty-five, seventy-eight forty-six, seventy-eight forty-seven, seventy-eight forty-eight, and seventy-eight forty-nine, and seventy-eight fifty. No, Tim, take it back.
No.
Seventy-eight fifty, uh, we did not vote on, so cancel that.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Schmidt, to read those ardentices as just read by title only, uh, and as a group or not?
No.
Yeah.
Title only. All in favor of reading by title only signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Fifteen A, ordinance number seventy-eight forty-five and ordinance amending ordinance number forty-one thirty-five to add territory to the Belleville Enterprise Zone.
Motion to approve ardentice number seventy-eight forty-five. So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Sillsby, second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on this ardentice? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
I have it. I'd ask for a motion to approve, uh, ordinance seventy-eight forty-six.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sillsby. Any discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
No.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
No.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
No.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Motion carries. I'd ask for, can we read these next three together?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Alderman Schneider, you have a problem, you wanna read them all separate?
Yes.
Ask for a motion to read seventy-eight forty-seven.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion on seventy-eight forty-seven. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to approve seventy-eight forty-nine.
So moved, Your Honor, with the amendments that we approved.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Schmidt, and noting the amendment, the adjustments or amendments we made during the original motion of the brick, okay? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Meyer.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galetti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
No.
Motion carries. The next one, we do not have to have. Unfinished business, is there anything? Alderman Hayden?
Yes, Your Honor, can you give us an update again on where we stand with the Meredith Home bids and that process?
The what now?
The Meredith Home bids that we got.
Yeah, we are, with the hiring of this young lady tonight, I think Eric and I, and we have a group that's gonna be meeting. Eric, do we have a date set? Well, it'll be probably, it could be yet this week, we're finally gonna sit down. I think we have, what, Eric, five bids? I think, believe there's five. It's been impossible up until now, but it's, it's our plan, probably later on this week. We will go through it, we will have a report to you, and at the next meeting, probably at Economic Development, we're gonna also have some other information to share with you pertaining to the Meredith Home and et cetera. It's just, it's been right now with everything going on, we've been short, short, and Eric and I have been, had, just not been able to get to it, but we do have a number of bids we're gonna be going through. Yeah, sorry.